I'd like to call the meeting of the North Rock Planning Commission to order. Ms. Keisha, would you please call the roll?
Alexander.
Here.
Blasco. Chambers.
Present.
Dietz.
Here.
Foster. Harris. Phillips.
Here.
White. Chairman Clifton.
Here.
Motion made and seconded that those commission members not present be excused.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Please turn off your cell phones. Welcome, Ms. Blasco. Please turn off your cell phones and on the back of the agenda are the planning commissioners, planning commission procedures on the back of the agenda. And if you come to speak, please speak into the microphone as we do record. You have been submitted a copy of the minutes of our previous meetings. Are there any additions or corrections?
For approval. Second.
Motion made and seconded, they'll be approved as submitted. Any comments? Anyone else? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We will move into our Development Review Committee's report. Mr. Don Chambers.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to review when he met. It's considered application, SD 2016 dash forty-four, North of Jenna. Edition Lot Six, Block Forty-Five, replant site plan review of commercial lot located the northwest corner of Main and Thirteenth Streets. The applicant was present and agreed to items one through twelve and subsections, and with that, the Development Review Committee recommends approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, that it be approved as submitted. Anyone in the audience like to make any comments on this? Any comments from any commissioners? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Item B is SD twenty sixteen dash fifty-two, Park Hill Edition, Lot Fourteen, Block One-O-Seven, preliminary plat of a residential lot located at thirteen, at three sixteen Skyline Drive. The applicant was present and agreed to items one through six and subsections, and with that, the Development Review Committee recommends approval.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this application? Any comments from any commissioners? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Item C is SD twenty sixteen dash fifty-three, Summers Commercial Park, Lot Eight, Block Two, site plan review of a car sales lot located at fifty thirty-nine Warden Road. The applicant was present, agreed to items one through twelve and subsections, and with that, the Development Review Committee recommends approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, that it be approved as submitted. Any comments from anyone in the audience? Any comments from any of the commissioners? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Item D is SD twenty sixteen dash fifty-four, Interstate Industrial Park, Lot Three, a site plan review of an industrial building located at thirty-five hundred Industrial Center Drive. The applicant was present, agreed to items one through ten and subsections, and with that, the Development Review Committee recommends approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, that this be approved as submitted. Anyone in the audience have any comments on this application? Any comments from any of the commissioners? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Item E is SD twenty seventeen dash one, Kieran Lusk Edition, Lot Two, our site plan review of an animal clinic located at ten thousand five hundred Malmill Boulevard. The applicant was present and agreed to items one through ten and subsections, and with that, the Development Review Committee recommends approval.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, that it be approved as submitted. Any comments from anyone in the audience on this application? Any comments from any of the commissioners? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
That concludes the Development Review Committee report. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chambers.
You're welcome to stay.
You're welcome to stay and you're welcome to leave. Thank you. We'll move into our public hearing. Item number one, to allow six bedroom bed and breakfast with a manager on duty and to allow events in a C-six zone located at one oh nine West Fifth Street has been postponed or has been withdrawn, so it will not be on the agenda again unless it's re-submitted. Move to item number two, conditional use, number twenty sixteen dash sixteen, to allow car sales in a C-four zone located at fifty-three oh nine Warden Road. Is the applicant here?
He just walked out.
Couldn't catch you?
Will he be coming back?
He's gone.
Is it our normal procedure?
Has he been through the planning or design review committee?
Yes.
Did he agree with everything at that time? Mr. Tim?
He asked that step five be waived, and he wants to allow the use of the currently existing one hundred and forty parking spots instead of the normally allowed four hundred and fifty square feet, one vehicle per one hundred and forty square feet, which would allow for one hundred and eight vehicles. So he's asking to have more cars on the lot than is normally allowed. City Council would then also take that up.
How many more cars is he asking for than would be allowed?
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight more? Okay. Mr. Chambers?
Parking lots existing, so he's just asking to use what's existing.
Okay.
Sorry, thirty-two. Thirty-two.
In lieu of the applicant not being here, I would suggest that what we could do, since he's asking for a variance of waiver and things like that and not here to discuss it, that we could approve it but not endorse any waivers.
Where are you at? Because we're getting ready to postpone it a month.
We told him to leave.
Hurry up.
No, no, we really didn't. We didn't.
Tell them that everything is past, y'all can go.
Well, I understood they're telling that engineer there. How far away is he?
He's in the building.
Oh, okay. Okay. We'll postpone this.
Tim, didn't we, we talked about the parking places?
Mr. Harris.
Mr. Harris, congratulations, sir.
Alderman Harris.
Alderman Harris.
I was trying to see what it felt like to be commissioner.
That's Alderman-elect. He's not, he's not actually.
Well, you're so close to it, I'm gonna call you Alderman anyway.
Yeah, I don't have my first check yet.
Do you have any, are you already thinking about your replacement?
I have, with his resume, and I presented to the mayor, and I've been trying to email it to you, and I've been so busy, I popped up.
Somebody lives on the, on the hill there, and he's sixty-five, sixty-six, sixty-seven, Hayes Kinzlo, who used to work for Arkansas Power and Light. He's so funny. I said, at that, back in our days of Arkansas Power and Light, you know, you wanted to get involved in the community. He's been on the planning commission at Dermont and Malvern. And back then, they didn't have the support group that we have right now, and so he had to look up everything. I said, now, man, they look it up, they hand it to you to pack it? No, he's just like, you know, but he's a energy efficient, energy manager for Kent Pike and the Air Force, so, facilities and stuff like that. So anyway, somebody good for y'all to consider.
Sounds like it might be somebody that might work.
I think so. Yep. Yep.
Applicant's present.
Mr. Marler, are you representing the applicant?
Yes, on the project on Warden Road.
Oh, yes, to the car lot?
Yes.
Yes, sir, please come up. Give us your name for the record.
I apologize there, I didn't see the public hearing at the, I get winded going up the stairs. You need to advertise where the elevator is.
Oh, really?
This used to not happen to me, by the way.
Go ahead and give us your name for the record, please.
Mike Marler with Marler Engineering Company.
You were present at the design review committee meeting?
Yes.
And were issued a list of conditions?
Yes.
Do you agree with those conditions?
Yes.
Okay, we just had a piece of information that he had asked for one to be waived or changed.
I'm sorry.
About the, the, the number of vehicles?
Okay. Provide that.
You're winded, so just use that as an excuse that.
Yeah.
Okay. Typically, I would do one curve feet, which would be a hundred and eight, since there's a hundred and forty present. All, one hundred.
How many parking spaces are there now, do you know?
Oh, okay. Hundred and forty.
Okay.
So we provide more than, okay. I apologize, yes, we do ask for that one change.
Is there anyone that would like to speak against this application? Any comments from any of the commissioners?
I just got a question. Because I wasn't paying attention. We're gonna allow a hundred and eight, but now we're gonna allow a hundred and forty? Is that right?
It's an existing car lot that has a hundred and forty spaces.
Okay.
Our new ordinance about six years ago wrote that you have to have one spot for every four hundred and fifty square feet, which would come out to a hundred and eight.
Okay.
So they're asking, since this is an existing lot, to use what's there.
To go ahead and use what's there.
Yep.
Okay. I don't have a problem, I just wanted to be sure I understood.
Mr. Chambers?
And I believe there's also a discussion about where to put the fence along the back of the lot.
Correct, they're, they're gonna set it.
We agreed to move the fence to allow for the woods to be a buffer.
Correct.
So the fence will be along the edge of the pavement?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, is that noted in the conditions?
It would be in the site plan, but yes, yeah.
And, and other than item five, you, you agree to items one through fifteen?
Yes.
All right.
Okay, any other comments from anyone in the audience? Any comments from any of the commissioners? On the application, please call the roll.
Alexander.
Yes.
With, with the amended number five.
Alexander.
Yes.
Blasco.
Yes.
Chambers.
Just a clarification, we're actually recommending that item five be amended. That's our recommendation to City Council, that's the ones they amended. Okay, yes.
Dietz.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
Phillips.
Yes.
Chairman Clifton.
Yes. The application did pass, Mr. Marler, in case you've never done this before, you know the procedure.
Yes. Appreciate it too.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mike? Take the elevator down.
Okay, that concludes our regular agenda. We open for a public comment. Anyone have any public comment they'd like to talk about?
Not me.
One thing I'd like to bring up is, where are we on that, on the study for the transitional? I mean, that's gonna probably come back again one of these days, I just wanted to, you know, when they get out of detention or whatever, that transitional house, isn't there, isn't there a study on that? Did we ask for a study?
Yes, we did talk about that, we sure did.
I mean, I hate for that to fall through the cracks, because it's gonna come back and bite us again.
Overlooking that, since you'll be an alderperson and become a much bigger hammer.
That's why I'm trying to get done. That's why I'm gonna get, I need to get that done.
You can push that study.
The, the house of three is what you're talking about?
Yes.
Situation?
Yes.
So staff has done a study, and we're sort of in the legal department part of legally doing what we're wanting to do.
Okay.
So there, there has been a study done even before you guys had asked, there was a study being done.
That's how to establish who is a resident?
Right. The definition of a house, definition of a resident, definition of a family, all that's...
Can you also suggest how to enforce it? Because once it gets down to enforcement, you know, what they could do, ask for everybody's passport, what?
So that, yeah, that'd be, that would be part of it also.
Okay.
But there, there, there's legal issues of all that, of how to do it legally, and that's, that's the catch-all, that's the issue right now.
Well, yeah, apparently there's some dollars there for, I guess, landlords that, that do that, and, and, you know, I mean, it's probably a business, and so I'm sure it's probably gonna come back up again, and I was just curious about that. Maybe this is not trying to bring it up, but, okay, so, I guess thirty more days, sixty more days?
At the moment, at the moment, it's, it would still fall under special use, so someone's wanting to do one of those, right now, they would have to apply for a special use to do it in a house.
Okay.
Sean, if I can suggest, I know when a convenience store wants to change their manager, they have to file with the city to say, this person's now the new liquor license holder, you know? How they do that? I'm not suggesting a procedure like that, but particularly in, in one house with multiple units in it, is there a way of, of asking the landlord of that house to list the current occupants and file that with the city clerk? Just turn it in or something like that?
And we sort of just changed the subject, so that's not, that's not a house of three, that's definition of a boarding house.
Okay.
So, so, but, but yes, we could do that, so that, I didn't want to confuse anybody of what, but yeah, so, the, Don's issue is how, how do you define a boarding house?
Okay.
I think also, one of the things that we're looking at with the concept of the house of three is to make sure that the number is not three, and that it is a number that actually brings such houses under the authority of the state enforcement agencies, that because the city doesn't want to be in the business of enforcing whether the occupants are being taken care of properly, or, and that's one of our issues as well. That's one of the things that we're gonna seek to, to change, that it cannot be a minimum number that immediately removes it from the state oversight agencies. And that's what this particular house would have done. It was made to be three for the, for that precise purpose, so that it would not have to adhere to any of the state regulatory requirements. So that's one of the things that we're gonna have to do, is to set a number that falls within the territory of, or the authority of the state. The other thing is what Sean has mentioned is that we are trying to avoid doing anything that would offend the rights of people who live together as family, and so it's, it's kind of complicated, but we're working on it. And I think that the concept, the house of three that we dealt with, the primary issue there was that it was a commercial business trying to set up in a residential area.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
Mr. Dietz?
Mr. Chairman, I don't think, well, I don't, as, as a commissioner, would not want to take the state out of it.
Correct.
Because that's something that comes under, I guess it's human services, and they've got people that check, and, and we're just not set up to do that.
Correct.
Maybe our ordinance needs to say that it shall comply with state regulations minimums, so that they may want to set up a house of three, but they've got to set up a house of four.
Right.
You know, with, in terms of the rooming house, I'm just trying to figure out a way of confirming how many residents are actually living in it. So if it's a zone duplex, you can have, you know, however many people per unit, if they don't go above that unit, that'd count, and if, if it's causing a nuisance in the neighborhood, there's a way of saying, well, you've got this many people in it, because you said those, these names are the ones that you registered at the, with the city clerk.
Well, certainly, that's, that is a viable idea to put the onus on the landlord who is renting out this space, to identify who his or her residents are in terms of the number, and they're, and who they are, so as to ensure that there's not an overflow or there are more people in there than, than we require, or whatever. So that's one way of looking at it, I'm sure that Sean and the, our office will talk about ways in which we can try to alleviate some of the issues that are concerning the planning commission.
Well, by naming the people, it cuts both ways. If you name six and you have eight, you can say, well, why didn't you name them two?
Mm-hmm.
And if you have problems, at least you could have a list of names you can go to, and if they're not on that list, then you're also in violation of not keeping track of the people you have there.
Right.
I, I don't want to think of it as a harassment tool, it's not a harassment tool, but it certainly will give the residents peace of mind, knowing that X number of people are occupying this wood frame house. And, you know, I've been told that, you know, chances of fire go up when you have multiple unrelated people in a property, so when houses are packed close together, that makes a big difference.
Yes.
That's why my neighborhood is very concerned about it.
Yes.
Well, and John, another thing, couldn't we do something like we do when somebody comes to us and wants a daycare center? What they have to do before they come to us is they've got to go to the state, and then the state sets the parameters. Does that not work?
That would be great for the halfway house, for sure.
For the house of three, that's what we're talking about. Yes, that would be another thing that we could do, to try to get some type of control over these particular houses, be, being situated in our neighborhoods. But, once again, we had the commercial, we had a business versus a, a, simply a residence being used and not, and that was the issue that we were dealing with, with the house of three.
We're talking two different issues. Yes, so we're switching back and forth.
I know. He was talking about house of three, and you're talking about the boarding house, yeah.
Sean, you're gonna be working with the city attorney's office to put together something for our review, as I understand it?
Yes, we, we have been working on something, so it's just, right now, it's, can we, what we've talked about, is it legal? So that's not, that's gotta be answered first before it comes to you guys.
Okay.
So, so it's, there's, we're, we're in that sort of a loop there right now.
Okay, good. Mr. Phillips?
I got a motion I'd like to make. I'd like to make a motion that we start having our planning commission meetings at four o'clock, four P.M.
Okay? Motion made and seconded, we'll open for discussion. Anybody?
Can we rate or raise the speed limit on Cantor Road to seventy-five?
That'd be all right with me.
Mr. Chambers?
I'll make the same argument I made earlier, which was the reason we, we used to meet at four. We moved to four forty-five for administrative and five o'clock for our meeting. That was about ten or twelve years ago. And the reason we did that was, we were having controversial issues at the time, and the public asked why we were meeting in such a way that the public could, the public, the working public could not get there in time, okay? We also had commissioners that had problems getting to the meeting on time, too, they work for a living, you know? So, so that's how it got to five o'clock.
I understand that.
But do you have a reason for moving it to four?
My reason is because I just think we can do it at four instead of coming at five or four forty-five and then getting out here at six, sometimes at six, six-thirty, and I don't see any reason why we have to do that. And we've got city employees that has to come down here and stay an extra two hours every afternoon, so, you know, I, I, that's just, I mean, I thought it out here, we can do whatever we want to do.
I, I think that, in the past, when we have had a large number of issues to come before the commission, that we don't have now, and we did that back then to try to accommodate more people that would come, but I have seen, over the years that I've been here, if they are interested in it, they're gonna come. They'll be here. And we don't have nearly the, the number of cases that we used to have, that took up a lot of time. We have had some, but not nearly as many as we used to, so in looking at the employees' time and in looking at our time, I think that if we moved it up to four o'clock, that would be something that would work for everyone, and, and I don't think that we would misput anyone by being another thirty minutes, forty-five minutes earlier than what we're doing now, I think, on that, so. Mr. Dietz?
Well, Tom probably brings up a quarter of five, but on the other side of the coin, if they want to be heard, it's very easy to do, all they have to do is write a letter, send it to, to Sean's office. Now, if we get, because we ask, has, has staff heard anything one way or the other, and Sean will say, well, we got three letters, or we haven't had any, or, or whatever, but if he said they had a hundred, get our attention.
Mr. Chambers?
With all due respect, that we had an issue before the commission, and there were petitions, and there were letters, and one of the commissioners said, and I quote, "Well, if it was important, they would be here," because there weren't people in the audience.
Okay.
So the letters and the petition don't carry nearly the weight of a body saying, you know, "I live next door, I don't like screaming kids in my bedroom window." That's, that carries a lot more weight for me than a letter that I have barely enough time to read and think about all the issues going on if it's passed out at the meeting. So I support, you know, what, what's a few minutes of my time if the public has an opportunity to speak out on something of importance to their life? I just don't see the inconvenience to nine people as opposed to something that is, to the, to the general public of North Villarock, it's vital to them. I mean, this is, you, you heard some of the arguments with the Lakewood House, I mean, this was, this was a gut issue for them, those were woods all my life kind of thing. So they have, got to give, be given the right to say it, and I don't, I don't consider...
We're not stopping them from the right to say it, though, Don.
I know, but if they, they have time to get here, they can say their piece. That's just...
Well, it's not just...
I think there's more people that come in, I think there's more people that come down here for an issue that there's only one or people, one or two people here that actually comes for the issue more times than it is one thing that's got fifteen people out here, that one, one issue that's got fifteen people. How many times we have that? Once every six months?
Well, now, right, currently, we do, we could change.
And, I mean, I'd just say, let's try it, if it don't work, go, we'll go back. I mean, that's...
One other thing is, of course, city employees are, you know, they understand this is their job, this is what they're gonna do, but it's not just nine people here. We've got five city employees sitting in here, not counting us, and most of the time, we have a couple of aldermen and other department heads in here that have to come to these meetings. So it's a, it's a consideration of their time, not just ours. We're volunteers, and we know what we're getting into if we volunteer and get appointed to this, but you have other city employees, you know, it's their job, and, and it's, I'm sure, an inconvenience that could possibly be...
May I make one more suggestion then?
Yes, sir.
Rather than decide tonight to do this, we have two commissioners absent, Mr. White and, and, Mr. Foster, both are quite vocal individuals, and I would like to let them weigh in on the question also, and ask that we vote on this at our first January meeting, and then all subsequent meetings would change.
There is a motion to second on the floor, if you would like to postpone the vote on it.
I'm going to postpone for one month, so all commissioners can have an opinion.
Okay, motion is made that we postpone the vote for one month. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, that we postpone for one month. It'll take five to pass, is that correct? Okay, please call the roll, please.
Alexander?
Yes.
And this is on the postponement, a month?
This is on the postponement.
Okay.
Yes.
Blasco?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Dietz?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Phillips?
No.
Chairman White, I mean, Chairman Clifton, I'm sorry.
No, but it did pass, no, it did not pass, it takes five to pass, so we will vote...
I think, I think five to pass the main motion, but a simple majority to pass the postponement.
I don't think that's right. Ms. Attorney? Miss Attorney?
I asked to postpone, it was just a procedural vote.
This is a postpone vote.
You were saying...
But I think that it takes five votes to pass anything on this commission. Mr. Spencer?
I think, I think...
We read our bylaws.
According to the current bylaws, all business must be approved by a minimum of five votes.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think that you're correct.
And then Nixon's, a simple majority of those members present does not necessarily approve a motion.
Okay, that's right.
It doesn't clarify whether they're administrative, procedural, or an application.
It does not, no.
You are correct, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, on the motion to move the meetings until 4:00, call the roll again, please.
Alexander?
Yes.
Blasco?
Man, I'm gonna cut my nose off to spite my face, but yes.
Chambers?
For the public, no.
Dietz?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Chairman Clifton?
Yes. Okay, that motion did pass. Henceforth, starting with our meeting in January, it will be at 4:00.
And any sudden items will be at 3:30 or earlier.
If there is any meeting needed for any pre-conference meeting, pre-meetings, that will be announced, and we'll attend to that. Administrative can be handled in with our 4:00. Ms. Blasco?
We have a person...
Coming to him, are you, yes, sir, we're in our public comment section of our meeting, do you have business before us?
Yes, sir, on the Warden Road.
Yes, sir, please come up.
Okay. My name's Brandon Rogers, I'm with Colliers, and we represent the less O and the less E on that application.
That's the one we just passed, didn't it?
He had to come from Cantrell, too, is why he's late.
That's already been passed.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I appreciate it. Traffic's bad out there, I'm sorry I was late.
You can get Mr. Marler, and he can tell you what transpired.
All right, great. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Could I float, in regards to the meeting, just an idea out there, and I don't know, and maybe when I present it, it may be such that we can't do it, but could, you know, the 4:00 be the norm, but is there, at your, you know, discretion, could you, if there is a controversial issue that may, you know, could, you know, at your discretion, could you say, "Well, this particular, we're having a special meeting on at 4:45," or 5:00, or something? I don't know, I'm just, I'm floating that idea out, you know, to...
I don't see how we could piecemeal meetings like that. Our agenda is published.
Yeah.
And when people make application for it, it's published on that.
Right.
So I don't see hardly how we could say, "Well, there's gonna be a lot of controversy here."
Yeah, I understand. Like I said, when that was coming out, I knew, maybe that's not as good as what it might sound.
Crossed my mind, too, Mr. Harris. I thought that might be possible, but I agree, it's gonna be difficult.
I'm working on trying to be quiet the first two months of my tenure there. The other aldermen are working on me to try to be quiet two months.
Okay, any other public comments?
Motion made, and seconded, we adjourn.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
And Merry Christmas to all.
Merry Christmas to all.